And the first thing we'll do are to review the board's agenda for this evening. Any questions about that? Okay. And then we'll begin with our staff updates, our municipal tax collection agreement update. Jennifer Pike.
Thank you, Commissioner Wells. Good afternoon, members of the board. I have a presentation brief. First, I wanted to provide a little background and the reason why we, I'm bringing forward the collection agreement addendums. Recently, Chris McLaughlin with the School of Government authored and posted a blog entitled, "County Tax Collectors and City Taxes." The post addressed items that have been identified as common administrative gaps in collection agreements across the state, and he offered recommendations to address those common gaps. Recommendations found in that post are being incorporated into our municipal collection agreements by an addendum to the existing agreements. We're also going to add some recurring reporting and approval processes. Just as a reminder, the active municipal collection agreements in place are with the city of Asheville, Town of Black Mountain, Town of Montreat, Town of Weaverville, and Town of Woodfin. The School of Government recommendations include municipal appointment of a tax collector, municipal tax collector delegating all duties to the county tax collector, the county tax collector to take the same oath required of the municipal tax collector, the municipal tax collector will have a bond. Each year, the municipality will adopt an order of collection for the municipal tax collector, and a copy of that adopted order will be delivered to the county tax collector. The county tax collector will obtain approval for refunds and releases of municipal property tax. So where we are in the process and next steps, the collection agreement addendums have been provided to and approved by each municipality we collect on behalf of. Each municipality is working through the completion of the recommended actions noted by Chris McLaughlin from the School of Government. And the last step is county approval of the addendums to the municipal collection agreements. Those are on the consent agenda today for each municipality. I would also like to add, there's no impact here to the residents. The billing, the collection, the payment processing still resides with the county, and there are no changes there. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any questions for Jennifer?
I had just one question, just out of curiosity. I think it was when I was looking at one of the addendums that's on the, for tonight. Do we have a county discount rate for paying early? It said something about that on one of them, and I was just curious.
We do not.
Okay.
It's part of the agreements. In case it were to be adopted, it would be across all municipalities.
Okay, thank you. I don't think we have any questions for you. Thank you, Jennifer. And now Dr. Armstrong for our Community Reparations Commission update.
Good afternoon. I am Commissioner's Dr. Norio Armstrong, Chief Equity and Human Rights Officer, here to present to you and talk to you about an update on the reparations commission. And so we'll have a recap, talk about our current progress, the reparations summit, our cease the harm audit, looking ahead and discussion. So these are just a couple of pictures and images from the reparations retreat that happened on July 29th at the Harris Cherokee Banquet Hall. We had members of the commission who were there. We had Venetia Crawford, who was brought in to help facilitate the conversation, to help them narrow down their scope, focus on their recommendations, focus on defining reparations, and just having this chance and opportunity to talk across IFAs and develop their work further. Here in these two photos, this was an activity that they did after lunch that everyone really engaged in, and it was an opportunity for them to go around to the different IFAs and look at the recommendations that have been put forth and to use sticky notes to note where there are crossover. So there are crossover between education and housing, crossover between criminal justice and wellness, health and wellness, and they really did appreciate that opportunity and activity to look at those further harms, look at how that could be repaired, look at the impact of past harms and how what they're, the work that they're doing, how it could develop into possible repair and reparations. And then to close out the retreat, they were able to then form these groups and working across IFAs. So you had criminal justice pairing up with economic development and housing and education paired up, and then health and wellness had enough people present that they sent two people to one group and one to the other group, and they all had their flip charts, and they were writing, and they were discussing, and they were seeing how there was this overlap with some of the recommendations and with some of the harms. And so the goal is that through this process, they're able to put forth the recommendations as a whole commission, not in silos by IFAs. But it was an opportunity for them to see the hard work that's been put forth so far in the year and a half. So our current dialogue or current progress, data team has been able to go to each IFA and have conversations and discuss with them what is going on. Seventy-seven percent of all data requests have been completed across IFAs. Nineteen percent has not been completed, and 10% of that cannot be completed. For whatever reason, we don't have access, state records. And some particular IFAs like health and wellness, they have 86% of their data. So that has been a useful tool in them, allowing them to assess the harm and work on and collaborate to develop their recommendations. The data repository created by the Library of Special Collections, we call it the Taro. They've all been able to see and been given access to that format, and it's a really great tool. Special Collections has done a lot of great work and put data and journals and books and things in there that we can have beyond the reparations process to use and access. County Department experts continue to visit. They've had visits from permits and tax assessors, and others may visit as well to provide them additional information that will help them in this process. Currently, county and city are in the review process of the first slate of recommendations. Those will be given back to the IFAs for them to hone in and tighten up and delete things that they don't need and have a better understanding of what may or may not be the best way forward with their particular reparations. And then the commission, last night, agreed to the parameters of defining reparations for Ashville and Buncombe County. So they invited Venetia Crawford back, and she was able, through a series of prompts, to get them to help compose a more collective, through the commission, idea of what reparations is, and she's going to get that typed up and send that back to Christine so that it can be on their branding, it can be on their agendas, it can be a part of where they move forward so that they have a direction, they have a pinpointed place that they're going towards with the recommendations that they put forward. So she asked them to consider, why is reparations important? They had, they all went around the room and shared out just random. Then she asked them, what would reparations be defined as? And then she gave them a prompt that asked them to look at what would they want to see continued and what would they want to see enhanced? And so they were able to share out around the room, and she collected that data and is going to put it all together. So we're excited about that process from last night. And then evaluating the timeline and progress toward completion, April 2024 is the initial deadline, but we're assessing that as we go to see where they are and what's coming up and how we can help support them. And then lastly, finalizing the plans for our reparations summit, our Community Reparations Summit on October 7th. And we're excited about that, and I'll share a little bit more on the next slide. So for community and public engagement, we have a series of events leading up to the reparations summit, the Community Reparations Summit on October 7th. The first one will be on Monday, October 2nd, where we'll be showing the documentary, "Black in Asheville" by Mr. Todd Gragg. And then on October 5th, we'll be showing the big payback that highlights the reparations process and work that was going on in Evanston, Illinois. Both events are free to the public. Both events will have food trucks. The doors open at 5:45. The movie will start playing around 6:15 or 6:30, and it'll be hosted in the Mullins and James Humanities Hall at UNCA Asheville. Those two events lead to the big Community Reparations Summit that'll be from 10 to 3 a.m., I mean, 10 to 3 a.m., 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. We're not going to stay there all day. On October 7th at the Cheryl Center at UNCA Asheville. Registration has closed for that event, but we're excited that we met our goal, and we're looking forward to those events. We have vendors, we'll have music playing, we'll have people from the community who'll be out, and this will be another opportunity for the IFAs to share with the larger community the work that's been done since the beginning of this process, where they are with their recommendations, and also have a chance to poll and talk to the community and get feedback directly from the community on what the community would like to see so they can add that into their recommendations as well. So transitioning a little bit to the Cease the Harm Audit, which has been developed out of the Community Reparations Commission. The Cease the Harm Audit was voted, agreed on a contract between Carter Development Group. Dr. Carter and Dr. LaShawna Wiggs came here on August 21st. They met with key stakeholders. They attended the, we're in September, so they attended the August reparations meeting and got to talk to the commissioners and share a little bit about them and their goals. They launched a kickoff. They talked to stakeholders in the city and the county, those that we'll be collecting data from. And so that has officially started, and as you can see from this image, there are 10 people who will be working. There are two people assigned to each IFA. So there's a researcher, and then there's an assistant. So they are honed in on collecting data, asking questions, and then they're going to schedule cohort meetings with those who, cohort members, and with department heads and subject matter experts to get the narrative piece. So this first half has been the quantitative data, just getting the numbers, getting questions answered, and then they're going to follow back up with the qualitative side and have conversation and develop the narrative to complete that. And the hope or the aim is that they will hopefully have a preliminary update aiming for December. Realistically, it might be January, but definitely by January, we'll have a preliminary result of the Cease the Harm Audit. So looking ahead, where do we go from here? From the Community Reparations Commission, they want to expand community education and seek additional input. They are really engaged and hone in on talking to the community and want to make sure that the black community in Asheville feel like they have a say in this process. And so they want to expand what's being done and said and taught and seek additional input. Some of that will start at the reparations summit. We'll continue to refine and finalize recommendations at the timeline milestones of this process of sending their recommendations for review, city and county reviewing, getting input from the community, going back and forth at certain intervals of time. And then continue to evaluate the timeline and progress towards completion. Again, looking at where they are, where they're coming from, what's been done, what may need to be done, and addressing those as they, as issues or conversations arise. And then our next commission meeting will be October 16th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Harris Cherokee Banquet Hall. Any questions or discussions?
Thank you, Dr. Armstrong. Commissioners?
I have a question. I guess without, this is going to put you in a hard spot, without speculating too much about what the recommendations will be, is there anything that we could do to prepare for the general tenor of what's going to be expected of us? Because I know a lot of the changes that are being considered, from what I've heard, or a lot of the audit on ceasing the harm is kind of hinging on us taking some action. Is there anything we can do in advance of receiving recommendations to kind of have a clear idea of what runway or learning curve we have in implementing something like this?
That's a great question. I think from the conversations that we've had, a lot of the assessment of the current recommendations is looking at what's already there. I think there are a lot of things that the county is doing, and it may be that we need to expand what we're doing or highlight how we're doing it and offer more opportunity and access to the community to get those resources. So I don't know that there's anything to plan for. I honestly believe from our conversations and multiple hours reviewing the recommendations and talking through, there are a lot of pieces in place. And so it might just be, how do we expand those pieces? How do we get more people out to know about those pieces? And how do we get them to build that trust between city and county and community so that they'll utilize what's there? And then whatever is missing, find a way through collaboration on how to build through that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Victoria, I think you're going to kick us off on the Fatal Overdose Response Team update.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Good afternoon, Victoria Riker, the Behavioral Health Manager for Buncombe County. So today, we're providing a brief update on our fatal overdose response efforts. Earlier this year, the commission asked that staff become laser focused on reducing fatal overdoses as a result of the opioid epidemic. As a reminder, these were recommendations developed through planning for the use of opioid settlement funds and aligned with the focus to reduce fatal overdoses. We will be providing updates on where we are in implementing these strategies on the right side. And so I'm excited, we have Dr. Shukin Shukala with Shukala Health Consulting, who we contracted with as our medical substance use professional to help us with data collection and understanding what are those important metrics to monitor and measure our impact, and to also work with our community paramedicine and our sheriff's office around being that bridge for folks from the hospital and the detention center. So I'm going to have Dr. Shukala come up next to provide some updates on current, more current data that we have available, and also some of those efforts that we are, have begun working on in terms of our data and making sure our responses are informed by the data that we have.
Hey, everyone. So I'm going to go over some data from the, of course, I turned off the screen, from the North Carolina opioid and substance use dashboard. There has been some discussion amongst county departments about the quality of this data. I would say pretty straightforward that this data is consistent with the way the CDC and other big health agencies collect data. So no data is perfect. There's unlimited ways to dissect data and say what it's missing and what it's not, but I'd say this is the highest quality that makes sense for us to pay attention to. And also, the thing that's most important, rather than the perfect number of the number of deaths or the number of overdoses, the number of ER visits, it's more about the trends. And so here you can see, this is data up to 2022. They usually say on this dashboard that the last six months of data is a little bit more questionable because death certificate data sometimes has a three to six month lag. But you can see that Buncombe, for several years, really mirroring the presence of fentanyl and then the pandemic, has diverged from the state's datas in terms of the overdose rates. And so this is deaths from all causes, but you can, if you looked at opioids specifically, it would be the same trend. And you know, you could see during the pandemic, the states tried to catch up with the county, but things have worsened nevertheless. This one's a little busy, so you can start by showing that the first bullet point showing that rate for Buncombe versus the second bullet point, the rate for the rest of the state. The third and fourth bullet points are also noteworthy because those, the first two are overdose rates, the last two are ER visits for overdose. And this doesn't show, oh, it does show the trend in the middle graphs. You can see for Buncombe, that overdose rate has sort of been consistently bad. However, the ER rate has actually improved or steadied in the last several years. And sort of, there's a few theories of why that is. One theory is that people are dying before they can reach the ER because of the potency of drugs and the drug supply. So before paramedics or community bystanders can provide naloxone to someone, they are succumbing to their overdose. And I think the other trend here is that, especially in Buncombe County, folks are choosing not to go to the ER, whether or not they were resuscitated or a paramedic was involved because of the perceived quality of those services in the ER. And so folks are not appearing in the ER for overdose and thus not being captured in that data. You can see on the right-hand side, again, the top one is the death rate and the ER visit rate. Buncombe is, you know, not the worst in the state, though worse than the average, but you can see a lot of the other counties that have this worse are often rural counties on the borders with other states, as well as you can see Mecklenburg and the Raleigh Durham area and other counties with big municipalities. So I would say there's nothing terribly surprising here. The other thing that's not noted on this data is that our rates of prescribing buprenorphine, which is the gold standard for saving lives, improving outcomes, reducing criminal justice recidivism, all the good things. That rate has also increased in Buncombe County, and particularly amongst Medicaid and uninsured beneficiaries who are at highest risk. So for many years, the county, you know, through either services through the county itself or community providers has increased the rate of this prescribing, and yet that has not kept pace with the need because it's been worsening so quickly. And the last thing, kind of connecting to the equity conversation we just heard, this one focuses on the racial breakdown of overdose in Buncombe, and you can see the numbers are quite small, and so like, this doesn't really reach statistical significance. But you can see they're comparing 2015 and 2020 in terms of overdose rates for biracial category. And though, across the board, things have worsened, and for white, non-Hispanic, things have worsened, 165% increase over those five years. See for black citizens of Buncombe County, that's worsened by 566%. And so though most overdoses are accounted for amongst white, non-Hispanic citizens, it's worsening faster for black members of our community. And you can see that represented in the graph on the right. You can see there's a lot of dots missing on the Buncombe line, and that's because the state is not reported regularly through the ways the state collects this. But the trends are nevertheless a little concerning, a lot concerning. And that's a good transition to equity.
So speaking about that, part of our response is adding a position into the Office of Equity and Human Rights, and we have titled this an Inclusive Connection and Healing Coordinator. So we are well into that process for hiring. This person is to really help connect with those communities and understand what they need. Just as some of our efforts in naloxone distribution, we understand that the message, how we approach these conversations, and really helping people to understand that how it is closer than you think. People are being impacted even if you don't realize that, you may feel like, no, no one uses substances in my house, and then recognizing that there are still some of those risks. So this person is going to be really helping to guide how we can make sure that our services, our supports are tailored to those communities that may have not previously been accessing services. Our equity team is also continuing to work with our Joint Information Center on awareness and marketing materials, which our Director of Communications will be sharing next, Lillian Govis. And then we're also really starting to meet with some of our behavioral health clinicians in the BIPOC community to really, again, understand what are those opportunities? What are efforts that are happening right now that creates safe and welcoming space for diverse populations that meets their needs? And hopefully coming up with some ideas on how we can, again, bridge that gap and really address this disparity of folks who are experiencing this increase in fatal overdoses. And then lastly, this group will continue to assess our programs and policies and how are we really recognizing those that aren't getting the services that have been offered? What are those barriers? And again, how can we change our processes so that we're able to meet each individual's needs and give them that same opportunity to get the services that they need? And so as I mentioned, talked about our awareness campaign, and I'll have Lillian Govis take over.
So August 31st was Overdose Awareness Day, and that was when we did our big splash to kind of kick off and have something notable in the community. But leading up to that, we got with other organizations, other municipalities, other agencies who have been in this work to find out their best practices so that we could learn from those, really focused on making sure that the language is positive and constructive and intentional about reducing stigma regardless of what community you come from, and then working with our bilingual information and communication specialists to make sure that the messaging that we're developing resonates into our Spanish language information as well as Russian and Ukrainian. So we kicked things off on opioid, or excuse me, overdose awareness day. What you can see with that image is the current advertising that we have going at Grail Movie House. If you go to a movie anytime between now and the big Christmas rush, you'll see these slides ahead of those movies. What we found with our messaging was that those with the connection to resources, Narcan, test strips, those were the ones that had the greatest stickiness. So those are the ones where we're really trying to invest in the community because we're seeing people take that information and turn it into behavioral change. We also put money behind a paid social media campaign, working on a Spotify campaign focusing on those demographics and age groups that Dr. Shukla was referencing, so that we're being very intentional about the work that we're doing, connecting to the communities who are seeing the greatest impacts from opioid and polysubstance use. We're also looking into YouTube advertising, and one of the great things that we're doing is partnering with the WNC Health Network. A lot of our messaging can be utilized outside of Buncombe County and tailored to meet those other communities' needs. So we're working with them on a regional collaborative in that space. We also made sure that we rolled this information out to our employees first. We have more than 1,400 employees who need to know this information so that they can help not only be connected to resources, but connect their friends, their family, their loved ones to these resources as well. Like I said, we've been working with our bilingual information and communication specialists to make sure that what we're doing is culturally competent, and we're in lockstep with our equity committee, who's also doing this work at the same time. We've brought our community paramedics out to our community engagement markets, helping to have those conversations, meet people where they are. We're distributing the materials out at community events. We were recently, last week, actually, at, working with the Mexican consulate, and so we were set up there, provided information, and Rocio Quintero, our bilingual information communications specialist, was able to actually give a short presentation during that event to help make those connections, distributing those materials right there. If you're coming to the October 7th reparations summit, don't worry, we'll have materials there, test strips and Narcan available to attendees. We're going to continue advertising on urban news, making sure that we have information in depth, in detail, in regular speak, on WRAS, helping to demystify and destigmatize this information so that people can have it and have it available when they need it most. I know I was impacted in my family by the use of opioids, so this is, I know firsthand how having that call would have helped change outcomes. We're distributing materials at all of our community festivals and continuing to have them out at our community engagement markets. So we're really excited, really committed to this work. Our Joint Information Center is comprised of staff, not only in the county, but the sheriff's office as well, and then, like I said, those regional partners like the WNC Health Network.
All right, so almost wrapping it up, and obviously if you all have questions, we'll welcome that as well. But just some of our last updates, as you just met, Dr. Shukala has been on boarded and has started meeting with our various departments and is starting to begin meeting with some of our community partners that provide medications for opioid use disorder to, again, better understand their process, opportunities that we can get people to the right place at the right time. Our community paramedicine expansion, we're excited. We've identified new staff to staff that four-person, I mean, not four-person, but we will have four community paramedics on staff 24/7, and we anticipate them to be all up and running in early October. They will be, the new supervisors and team will be working closely with Mission Hospital Emergency Department. They have been slowly working on implementing their medication, access to medications for opioid use disorder for those that are presenting to the emergency department in hopes to really align with the community paramedics to make sure we're able to get people given that support in between from leaving the emergency department to getting connected with their ongoing provider. And this expansion will allow our current teams to be based out of the Swananoa and West Asheville area, and this is just to help kind of increase our response time, continue to kind of real- to kind of really touch these communities and be available, but also have our team centrally located in the West Buncombe Fire Department to continue to work with the detention center and the Mission Hospital. And then I wanted to share with you all that there has been some exploration about co-response. Co-response, a lot of times what people think of is when there's more than two people, right, that might show up. And so we've actually been looking at how do we utilize our sheriff's office, community paramedics, and mental health clinicians? And so it was an exciting opportunity to just start exploring, what would this look like? What is the community open for? And what we really learned is that, one, this is something that the community wants. They want that alternative response. And we're also noting that we're getting some better outcomes by being able to spend more time than maybe a patrol officer would be able to do. And again, having some specialized training with our crisis intervention team. And so that's just been exciting to see, that someone who needs help, that maybe on the forefront, it's not clear, but able to have different perspectives. So you've got your law enforcement perspective, what are those considerations? How can we mitigate further maybe justice involvement that could prevent them from getting into a treatment facility or to get those resources that they need? How are we looking at their medical well-being, making sure that's being taken care of, and also their mental well-being, and helping to really get folks into the treatment that they need as soon as possible? So this was just an initial, and again, what I'm just kind of sharing with you all is that it is welcomed. We are able to look at doing this, and we'll look forward to further conversations of really building this out and seeing how we're able to support our community, again, getting people to the right resource at the right time and the right place. And so just thinking of what our next steps will be, one, obviously with Dr. Shukla onboard, he's really looking at different programs, what are the, what's the information that we're collecting? As you all may know, a lot of times our programs have been born out of grants, and there are certain requirements that might be needed. And so really looking across the county, what is the information that we're gathering? How can we assess our impact in being able to do this consistently? He is diving in and already, as of today, coming up with some ideas, so more to come. Another thing that we'll start looking at and talking about is just what are opportunities to support strategies that address the systemic root causes with our Wave II funding? So we will work with commissioners to prioritize the use of potential Wave II funds, so look forward to some future conversations with that. And then lastly, it's never too early to begin our conversation about sustainability. As you know, Wave II or opioid settlement funds, both waves or any waves, will eventually titrate down. There may be new initiatives, things that we want to look at. So what is our plan to continue to sustain some of the services that may need to continue in a long-term versus an immediate response? So we want to start having those conversations and figuring out what is a plan to make sure that as opioid settlement funds reduce, that we are able to continue to meet the needs of our community. And so with that, we've given you all a lot, but open any questions or comments.
Good to see you all. Thank you so much for these updates, and obviously, a lot has been happening since June when we last heard from you all. So thank you all for the very hard work and leadership, and welcome Dr. Shukla to the county team. We're glad you're here. I had a couple of questions, just to go a little deeper, particularly on the operational piece. And sort of within those sub-strategies, I think it seems like the ways we create bridges into MAT access and ongoing clinical care is really one of those key difference makers in terms of lives saved. And wondered if there are some, any additional updates that could be provided just around sort of what we can look for moving forward in terms of access to MAT really starting to increase? It looks like this is sort of the hiring timeline for the new staff, but sort of if we have any updates at this point around when those additional protocols might be online, either at the detention facility or the emergency room, or if there's any other settings that are under consideration around how MAT could be made available and accessible to more high-risk folks?
Yeah, I think in terms of any timelines, definitely getting the new team onboard is a big piece of that, to really then work with the hospital to identify who are those folks that would be best served. And then again, as Dr. Shukla is starting to reach out to community partners, who are other partners that folks could go to when needed? We know Mahak has been meeting a huge need, and yet, no one provider can do it all. And so how do we get people to the right service at the right time? So beyond, I believe, really in that early October, having that team, once they get onboarded, which, again, they are identified and even backfill, folks have been identified, I think we'll really see some updates and really able to give some kind of timeline of, we are running, we've got to start. I think even Mission Hospital is going to be starting very slow in the numbers that we are getting started, but no specific timelines at this moment. And then I-
Jasmine, before you move on, to her point, Mission has started. It may be slow, but they have started doing MAT and working with Mahak as well.
Okay.
That is actually happening, but it started slowly, but it is started.
Okay. And in terms of the detention facility, do we have any updates there?
Conversations are underway.
Okay.
There you go. We're still in the planning phase.
Okay. The other question I have is, it's great to get that sort of high-level data update, but is, maybe Dr. Shukla, if you could speak to us a bit about what we know about folks, the folks in Buncombe County who are at highest risk of imminent overdose death? Like, how would you characterize that population? And as you're thinking about how we prioritize ways to get lifesaving interventions to them?
Sure. And I would base my answer, one, on sort of the national data trends, which has been published pretty widely and consistently over these years. And then, two, on data that we collected when I was at Mahak, and we did the collaboration with the EMS for Buncombe Bridge of Care, which were starting patients on buprenorphine in the field post-overdose, sometimes immediately overdose, post-overdose, sometimes days later, sometimes weeks later, as well as data from Sarah Gayton and her team in the sheriff's office. So the majority of folks who are experiencing overdose have pretty high levels of being unhoused, being uninsured. It's more men than women, ages 20 to 40. However, folks in the geriatric range, over 65, are very much under-recognized as a group that's not getting access to treatment or not getting screened for substance use disorders. But before I go down that wormhole, so 20 to 40, more men than women, unhoused. I was surprised in some of that data at the levels of employment. It's not as unemployed as you'd imagine, but being employed in Buncombe County can be very still consistent with being unhoused and uninsured and not having your social determinants of health needs met. Yeah, and transportation challenges were very high, at least in that post-overdose cohort. And so that's consistent with big cities and rural areas throughout the country, particularly in areas that have rural pockets like Buncombe County has. And in terms of access, I think the paramedic program has been some of the biggest interventions and really ahead of the curve of most counties, even big municipalities around the country, to service those folks who experience those gaps and challenges. I don't know if that answered the question, or if I just-
That's really helpful. Part of why I ask is also the, the more insight we have there, the more it intersects sort of with the nexus of work we're doing around increasing emergency shelter options, bringing more housing online, supportive housing, and addressing sort of mental health needs in our community. So I hope as we move forward, and particularly as more kind of congregate shelter settings come online, that where there would seem to be a very high overlap of people fitting in exactly the demographics you're describing, that there might be some opportunities for us to think about how that intersects with the way MAT screening and those kinds of things are happening. So thanks for kind of shining a light on that. And in our ongoing policy work across the criminal justice space, opioid response space, and ending homelessness, you know, there's a lot of dots, I think, that can be connected as we think about how to integrate services for folks.
Yeah, and I do have a bias here because I'm on, I'm a board member for Homeward Bound, but we had on Friday an event to recognize the opening of Compass Point Village. And, you know, those folks are the exact demographic I just described, that high risk of overdose and substance use issues. And unlike some of the other providers of shelter and housing support in the county, Homeward Bound subscribes to Housing First policies of not requiring sobriety or agreeing to treatment in order to be housed. And so even if you didn't provide someone with treatment, having someone housed in some ways decrease their overdose risk, but also potentially increases it when people are using a loan. But as I understand it, AMCH, like Dale Fell will be providing services there on campus, and then Sunrise will be providing peer support and like a pure living room on campus. So I think that's going to mitigate all those dots you just mentioned.
Thank you. That was the end of my questions. Thank you all. Any other commissioners with questions?
Dr. Shukla, just to clarify, just from my own education, what I heard you say, maybe you can clarify or repeat, that the demographic data you've seen suggests that the people that we're targeting, or should be targeting, are largely unhoused, 20 to 40, but also perhaps kind of in the 50/50 range of employed versus unemployed. Is that-
Yeah, I would say that's a discount the concern that folks with addiction are unemployed. I think a lot of folks with addiction are employed. That doesn't seem to be the barrier or characterization. It's usually lack of housing and lack of transportation, which is, you know, harder hurdle to climb. You know, I've been bouncing these numbers around in my head and saying in some meetings that the national rate of opioid use disorder is about 2% of the population. So at Buncombe County, it's about 280K. That's about 5,500 people with opioid use disorder. Let's say about half or so want treatment, you know, it might be more, but let's say half, that's about 2,700 people. With the current infrastructure we have, I know at Mahak, we had about 700 or 800 unique patients on some form of MAT in a year. I think Dale Fell and Lester Clinic, the AMCH clinics, it's maybe close to that, maybe a little less. And then if you look at the OTPs, each of them maybe have 100, maybe 50, maybe 150. So that's of the folks who want treatment, maybe half them have access to treatment, but that leaves a gap of maybe about 1,000 people. These are the folks who are the hardest to reach. These are the folks in tents, these are the folks on Ann Street, these are the folks interacting with the criminal justice system. And I think the, I mean, I'm saying this as now an insider, but even when I was an outsider, I felt the structures that the county's pursued, the paramedic program, the jail-based services, this is exactly what the county needs and really what the country needs to address the overdose epidemic. I don't know if that answered your question, I'm just here to talk.
You did. I'm just trying to piece together in my mind how these different dots connect and in what order. So thank you.
And I'd like to give Lillian some feedback, good feedback from this weekend. I was in Barnardsville at the celebration for the pool Saturday, and then yesterday I was at fundraiser for WRAS. And in Barnardsville, a lady walked up to me when I was leaving and thanked me and said, you know, the county is finally doing a good job of keeping us informed even up here. And it really, you know, I looked, I said, oh, great, you know, whatever. And of course, yesterday at WRAS, you know, they were singing your praises, you know, so keep up the good work. We appreciate that. You make us all look good.
Well, I'm gonna, I gotta give credit, most of that, especially in Barnardsville.
I know it's your staff.
It's Rashida, yeah. She walks in and it's like Beyonce's there.
Yeah. Yeah.
High praise.
Well, hey, keep it up.
I just had, just kind of a quick plug. As we go forward, I know that it's difficult to project the timeline for when we see results, what results look like, what are measurables and deliverables are going to be. But I'm excited by this, and given the number of areas where there's intersection across our systems, I'd love to see if we can kind of plug in the work that y'all are doing into the different committees that were already having these conversations. And I know you're already plugged into every one of those groups, so God bless you for having attended like 50 meetings, but I would, I think that would be really helpful for all the parties involved, all the stakeholders, including those beyond necessarily county staff, to hear some of the data that we're hearing, because I think it's going to inform some serious changes here.
One clarification, you said for the community paramedic, did you say we have four staff on 24/7?
Come October, the plan is to have the four staff on, the four community paramedics on staff 24/7.
Okay, thank you.
And that's going from two to four.
Thank you.
Do you think that will address the challenges that you both mentioned around folks not going to the ER? By having more community paramedics available, will that, you know, hopefully address some of those challenges of reaching those folks before they-
I think, I mean, as Dr. Shukla mentioned, right, folks who are unhoused without transportation, these are the folks that our community paramedics are outreach-ing and being even sometimes proactive. You know, they really have made a network of folks and providers that are out there helping people. And so I think that is increasing those likelihood that an individual that might be ambivalent, doesn't have the transportation to figure out where to go, to know that a paramedic can come meet you under that bridge, you know, wherever you might be, and give them, really what I'm noticing as I've, as I'm working on our opioid impact report to the state, that a lot of the feedback is like, you saved my life. You gave me hope that there is an opportunity to get recovery. And so, yes, I would expect that that is, the fact that we'll have more people, a lot of times our community paramedics, just like law enforcement, will have a couple stacked calls. And so sometimes we're having to follow up later, can't find the person. So this is increasing our chances of getting that person as soon as possible, kind of building that relationship so that they are willing to continue with services.
Thanks, Victoria.
I guess I actually had one more thing, which was the co-responder piece. I think that some of us may remember in the height of the pandemic, doing a call with cahoots out in Oregon. Some of us in this room were on that call, and to my knowledge, this is sort of the first real steps we've seen within Buncombe County of an integrated response model. So that seems really significant that that's happening. You're laughing. Was it, it feels like it was decades ago? Yeah, but I think that's really notable and worth kind of, worth kind of just recognizing the big lift also underway there. And how, you know, we don't always take the time to connect the dots, but the consolidation of 911 services, you know, the just ongoing kind of deep work happening at the collaborative level between county departments are all the kinds of things that are making this possible. So exciting to see these marks of progress as we move forward.
Awesome. Thank you all.
Thank you. And I think that was it, unless there's anything else that any of the commissioners needed to address? Okay, thank you all. We'll be back at, oh, I'm sorry, closed session. Mr. Frew.
Thank you, thank you. Pursuant to 143, 31811A5, we need a request, a motion to go into closed session to hear real property matter regarding price and other material terms of a proposed real estate contract. And we anticipate the board-
Second.
-may come back later and address the issue.
So moved and seconded. All those, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Okay, thank you very much. We will go into closed session. And we'll be back at-
No, we're going to be in room 310.
Oh, okay, we'll be in room 310. Going to 310.